Twenty meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board. Per order of Governor Charles Baker issued March twelfth, twenty twenty, suspending provisions of the open meeting law, the Mashpee Planning Board is meeting remotely as Mashpee Town Hall is closed to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live on channel eighteen, livestreamed at www.mashpma.gov/channele-18, and the public can also call five oh eight, five three nine, one four zero zero, extension eight five eight five to listen in. The Chair would like to welcome Mr. John Filone to the Planning Board. Welcome aboard, John.
Welcome aboard, John.
Um, the Chair will now, um, call the meeting to order by roll call vote. Um, please respond present when I call your name. Dennis Falzarini.
Present.
John Filone.
Present.
Jack Phelan.
Present.
Joe Callahan.
Present.
Rob Hanson. Don't think Rob is here. Mary Wagon here. And just to double check, is Jen on the line? Yep, okay. So seeing quorum, the Chair calls the July first, twenty twenty, meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board to order. To start the meeting, I invite you to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. So, um, on our agenda, our first matter of business is reorganization of the Board Officers' Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk. So I open up the nominations for Planning, uh, Board Chair. Please announce your name and the nomination.
Dennis Falzarini, and I nominate Jack.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion. Joe?
Jack, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Is there any other nominations for Chair? Being none, I close the nominations for Chair. So Jack Phelan has been nominated for the Planning Board and seconded and has, um, accepted the nomination. So by roll call vote, please indicate if you elect Jack Phelan, Planning Board Chair. Dennis Falzarini.
Yes.
John Phelan.
Yes.
Sorry, John Filone.
Yes.
Jack Phelan.
Yes.
Joe Callahan.
Yes.
Mary Wagon, yes. Congratulations, Chairman Phelan. Please continue with the nominations for Vice Chair and Clerk.
Okay, I'd like to take nominations for the Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Mary Wagon for Vice Chair.
John Filone, I'd like to nominate Joe Callahan for Vice Chair.
Do we want to take a second? Or do we, Mary, do we take a second for those, or do we, uh?
Yeah, you have to take a second.
Somebody needs to second those, yep.
Or do I have a second for Mary Wagon? Do I have a second for Joe Callahan? I'll give a second for Joe Callahan. Do I have any other nominations for Vice Chair? Joe, do you accept the nomination for Vice Chair?
I do.
All right, seeing there are no other nominations, I'll close the nominations for Vice Chair. I'll take a roll call vote for Vice Chair. Dennis Falzarini.
Yes.
Mary Wagon.
Yes.
John Filone.
Yes.
Joe Callahan.
Yes.
And I say yes. Congratulations to Vice Chair, Joe Callahan. Do I have any nominations for Secretary?
Clerk.
Oh, sorry, Clerk, not my fault.
I nominate John for Clerk.
I'll second that. Do I have any other nominations for Clerk? If there are other nominations, I'll take a roll call vote. Dennis Falzarini.
Yes.
Mary Wagon.
Yes.
Joe Callahan.
Yes.
John Filone.
Yes.
And John Filone, I say yes. Congratulations, John Filone, to Clerk.
Thank you.
And that's the nominations. I don't think we have anything else, right? As far as, uh, Board Officers. And we want the next item on the agenda, and that's the, uh, Board Representatives to the different committees and commissions. As we know, we have five different committees. Um, do we want to, does everyone want to stay in the same committee? The only open committee right now is, uh, Environmental Oversight. Um, Joe Callahan, are you okay with the Design Review Committee?
I'm happy to continue if everyone else is happy, but also happy to mix it up as well, whatever you'd like.
Okay, anyone else interested in the Design Review? Dennis, I have you on as the Historic District Committee.
Yes, I do.
Anyone else interested in Historic District? Okay. Community Preservation, Mary, I had you as in the Community Preservation. Do you want to continue with that?
Yes, I would.
Anyone else interested in Community Preservation? Okay, we'll continue with that. Environmental Oversight is an open position. Uh, John, are you interested in the Environmental Oversight? Anyone else? And then the, uh, the Military Surveillance Council. I was a member of that and actually, uh, still going through the whole process to get on the committee, uh.
Yeah.
One year later.
Say that, Jack.
It is signed, except for office. I actually got a letter that is finally in the Governor's Office, but clearly with things going on, they haven't signed it yet. So, uh, I'll continue with the Military Council.
And the only military person on this board, I think that's best. I'll be home at home here, bring it to you, so you're aware when you first meet.
It's gonna be a party when they finally have a meeting. Uh, and the last one is the Cape Cod Commission. Uh, Joe Callahan, you were, you were, uh, representing us at the Cape Cod Commission. Do you wish to continue?
Uh, happy to. I would just ask Mary, I know you're very involved in too, if you'd like to, but I'm still happy to continue with it.
Um, yeah, I'll do that, 'cause it's more like reporting on what they're doing.
Yeah.
So.
Right, that's exactly what it is, it's just kind of giving us information.
Let me try it out, and if, um, I don't like it, I'll give it back to Joe. How's that?
Throw it right back to me if you like.
All right, so we have the law, should I take a vote? To, uh, Evan, should I take a vote to?
Yeah, 'cause, um, well, the, the Chair appoints our representative to the Design Review, so you just have to say that. I appoint blah, blah, blah to the Design Review.
All right, I'll appoint Joseph Callahan to the Design Review Committee.
I accept.
And then take a vote for the slate.
Yeah, can I just take the vote as a group? Evan, that okay?
Yeah, it would as a group.
All right, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to, to add as a group all the committee members. Put the vote.
Okay, any second?
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Dennis?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mary?
Aye.
Joe Callahan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And I'll say aye as well. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda is the, uh, Approval of the Minutes. I reviewed the Minutes from June seventeenth, I didn't find anything else. Anyone have any questions with regards to the June seventeenth Minutes?
I don't.
I'd like to take a motion and we accept the Minutes as written?
I'll be.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Dennis?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
John?
Uh, I don't think I can vote, 'cause I wasn't there.
You can ask him. And I'll say aye. Okay. Move on to the, uh, at seven ten. We'll open up a pub, public hearing for the Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC. Pursuant to Mashpee General, uh, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-eight, Section eleven, the Mashpee Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty, at seven ten at the Mashpee Town Hall, sixteen Great Neck Road North, to consider an application from Southworth Mashpee Properties LLC, property owner. To modify the Willabend Country Club Special Permit, the applicant proposes to construct a six-unit multifamily residential townhouse structure to be known as the Clubhouse Villas on four, forty thousand nine square foot parcel located north of Twin Quipit Avenue and found on the Assessors' Map, sixty-nine block one one seven.
Mr. Chair, can I note one thing before you get started?
Absolutely.
Um, the public hearing notice has written on the agenda, it still lists June seventeenth as the opening hearing date. It's July first. We did reschedule that in the butters and, uh, the butters were notified of July first, and the newspaper notes July first. So that's just an issue in the, on the agenda, but there are no issues with regard to notice, um, for the July fourth, July first hearing. I just wanted to note that, uh, in open session, that it is indeed opening on July one.
All right, yeah. We did receive correspondence, uh, from the applicant requesting to postpone this to the first meeting in August. So do I need to take a motion on that?
I make a motion, we continue the public hearing to August, uh, at seven ten.
Have a second?
Second.
I will second that motion. Joe?
All those in favor? Dennis?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Joe Callahan?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Okay. Going to new business, it's Charlie Riley's building, uh, in June twenty twenty. Charlie, you want to go through that?
Uh, yeah, I can, I, I hang on just a second. Got to pull it up here. Yeah, uh, that has to do with the, um, inspections that were made prior to your approval of the release of security for cottages two and three down at New Seabury. Um, and then on, uh, there was an inspection at Willow Park, uh, they had actually installed some of the smaller rain gardens, uh, and then asked me to inspect it after everything had been put in place, but nothing had been seen. The only thing I could see was from the top down, which was virtually nothing. So, uh, by discussion with them and, uh, agreement, they pulled them out and agreed that they would reinstall them while I observed some of the construction and gave them, uh, some indication as to how far they could go with it before I needed another one. Uh, that's what that inspection was about. On, uh, June eleventh was the, uh, inspection of Cape Cod Coffee, uh, with respect to the, uh, the slope in the front of it and, uh, apparently a complaint that the Planning Board, um, office had received regarding the extension of the slope beyond the limits and the removal of vegetation. Uh, I believe that you had my report on that for the last meeting. Uh, and then June twenty-six was a site inspection, uh, with Evan, uh, in which we went over the general requirements of the remaining portion of the site, because I'd received, I guess, uh, Evan had received a request for that because they wanted to do some paving. So we, we discussed a number of things during that meeting on site with the owner as well as the construction, um, site construction contractor, uh, and some of the details of the inspection are shown on my invoice submittal with what we did. So that, that's what the invoice is for, for the month of June. I did an additional inspection yesterday, but, uh, since it was so late, uh, I'll include that inspection on my July bill.
Very good. Okay. Um, since I do have a letter from you regarding the, uh, June twenty-sixth, I said we just, uh, processed this bill, we'll go ahead and take care of the bill first, and then we'll go through the other businesses, and we'll get to your report, we'll sort of discuss the letter.
Sure, yeah. It's just a reiteration of, of the letter.
I get a motion to accept the, uh, to, uh, accept the bill here for the five hundred fifty dollars?
I'll be.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the, uh, June, uh, bill for five hundred fifty dollars? Uh, Dennis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe Callahan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I'd say yes from me as well. The next item is the Town Planner Report. Uh, Evan, do you want to go through this?
Yeah, sure, I, I, I'm sorry for getting you a memo so late before the meeting. Um, Charlie, did you have a take, a chance to look at the brief language I provided in the memo regarding updates to subdivision rules and regulations and special permit regulations?
Uh, for the cluster box unit for mailboxes?
Yes.
Yeah, I did. Um, I was wondering whether or not it, um, it needs some information as to what would be provided, um, on the plans for information and whether or not, uh, you'd want to suggest, um, not a location, but the fact that it would have to include a point where the, uh, could, could, uh, get off of the travel way to service those boxes. It also would provide a, a place for people to pull off the travel way in case they wanted to get to the mailbox. Um, Winchime Point has one that is, uh, is something that they developed some time ago and put in place, and I believe it works pretty well.
Yeah.
Um, they used to have one out front, but then they removed it and put it into a large facility that was inside their development. But it was saying to me that there should be something like that. Now, whether you want to get into that detail with respect to, um, uh, this regulation or whether you want to do it as a part of, uh, the actual review of the project, once you see what it is, I guess it's your choice as to how you'd like to handle that.
I, I opted to keep the language very general because the sole purpose of making the amendment is to merely put the onus on the developer to engage with the postmaster prior to submitting their application, because, and I, I opted not to be overly prescriptive with regard to access and location, because the board doesn't have any authority with regard to the location. It's up to the postmaster to tell the developer where it's going to go. So I was hesitant to do that, but if there, if there's a way we can be more prescriptive without, you know, uh, you know, uh, take, you know, making decisions for the, you know, making assumptions about location, um, I, I really intend, intended on placing the language in there, just so, uh, developers know they need to engage with the postmaster at the beginning of the process.
There's just so much in there where they could park to pick up their mail. I mean, the post office is going to say, we want the mailboxes at their spot, but I'm not going to tell them, the developer, you need to have two spaces or three spaces. You know, because they're quiet, they would park on the street and people couldn't get by when they were trying to get their mail, then they moved it.
So Charlie, do you recommend we might, we, we add language to that, once, once a location is decided upon by the postmaster, that there are some standards like you would for a sidewalk or, or other facility, um, relative to the post, the cluster mailboxes?
Well, it, it may be a site-specific kind of thing, because clearly it's going to change for whatever kind of a development it will be. Um, I would, I would suggest maybe some, uh, general language that, that indicates that, uh, in addition to the location specified by the Postal Service, uh, that the Planning Board will work with the developer to establish, uh, details of the particular site that is, uh, chosen for the location.
Sure.
That way you've, you've not, uh, delegated the whole thing to the Postal Service and your developer can come back and say, well, we satisfied the postmaster, that's all we have to do.
Okay, that makes sense. Will you work with me on making some adjustments to the language?
Sure, glad to. Yeah. We can get some sort of final approval thing on it.
And is there any other feedback from the board?
Yeah, um, so I remember we modified these before, and I, do we have to have a public hearing?
I think you do.
Okay, all right, and then, and then we have to turn them into the clerk?
The clerk, and they also have to go to land court.
Okay.
Yep. And the registry deeds on the, on registered side as well.
Okay. All right, good.
I did have one question on the special permit regs. Are those the Planning Board's special permit regs?
Yes.
Or is that under the zoning bylaw?
Those are the special, the Planning Board's adopted special permit regulations.
Okay. Will anything go into zoning bylaw to, um, indicate that also for the plans that, um, might otherwise go to the ZBA?
You know, I hadn't considered it, Charlie, but I, um, I will take a look to see if there is anywhere in the zoning bylaw where it may be required.
Oh, because something else might go to the ZBA and not the Planning Board?
Yeah.
Well, the, uh, the only scenario that requires the cluster mailboxes is a subdivision that creates eight or more lots, um, or a, or a multifamily residential situation or commercial building, generally which falls under the purview of the Planning Board via, via special permit process. So I don't know if it'd be required, but let me go through the zoning bylaw to see if there's somewhere where it would be appropriate so all the documents communicate together.
What, what about a comprehensive permit? That would go to the ZBA.
That's true.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, but, you know, with the small amount of land left in Mashpee, we probably won't have to deal with this too much at least, which is probably a plus.
Under current zoning, that's accurate.
Well, it's great that we're doing, there won't be a big, uh, obstacle for us, won't be, won't be coming up a lot, was my point, I guess.
Unlikely, it's, uh, I'm, it, the whole intention is just to avoid a situation like we, like, um, with the Evergreen, this came up because of the Evergreen Circle subdivision, and there's no mailbox, and everyone's trying to establish mail service, and they're like, well, you need to put in a community mailbox, and no one really knows whose responsibility it is. It should have been done by the developer at the beginning of the process.
Yeah.
So now I think it's going to be paid for by, uh, one of the purchasers of a lot, and they're going to have to make some arrangement with all the other lot owners, which, um, I don't think they were all that pleased about. So if we can avoid that, if it happens once, then we did a, a good job.
Morgan, what do we need to do to move this forward?
Um, if the board is still happy with, um, the general idea, I'll work on some modifications as discussed, the language, and provide something more concrete than the general memo.
Yeah, I'll give it now.
Yep, yep.
Um, this isn't a pressing, pressing matter, but, um, uh, we'll, I'll keep moving, working on it so we can get something together.
All right, the, the update to subdivision rules and regulations?
Say it again, Jack?
What are the other two items that are on your Town Planner Report?
Um, so we have the subdivision rules and regulations and special permit regs, that's what we just discussed. Um, the last item is an update on Stormwater Task Force.
Right.
I spoke to you some, I think before the pandemic about, um, and Charlie and I had actually met with the DPW's consultants to discuss necessary bylaw amendments to maintain compliance with our MS four stormwater permit, which Mashpee, Mashpee is the perempty of, uh, of the EPA permit. Um, I hadn't brought this back to you sooner, because I had never received a final memo from the consultant after Charlie and I had engaged with them, so I reached out to them to, to obtain that and get some clarity about what, uh, changes would be necessary to make sure that we are in compliance with that permit. Uh, and I did receive it on the twenty-ninth, and I wanted to discuss it with you today, um, because it's the last opportunity I can have a conversation with the board prior to the submission deadline for zoning bylaws. Um, so I did send you the final memo. Um, they're, they're generally housekeeping, um, articles, but they are requirements of the MS four permit. Um, I, I think we can bring this back, I want to bring this back to the board to discuss the specific amendments, but I'm just seeking the board's authorization to submit placeholder articles relative to the MS four permit by the deadline.
I know we got it at the last minute, and I did happen to go through some of it, and I actually liked the way it's laid out, because it, uh, explains why you need to change certain sections, but I didn't go through the whole thing in depth.
Yeah. You know, Charlie and I noted in our.
Do you want to get placeholder for it?
Yeah, um, I, I spoke with the Assistant Town Manager and the Town Manager's Office about what they need to, you know, meet that deadline, and they just need a general concept of what the article's about and the scope of it. Um, so I'd like to at least do that, so that I can come back to the board with specific warrant articles.
Do we, uh, do you take a vote to set that placeholder, or can we just get an agreement here?
Uh, I'd, I'd like the board to vote.
Make a motion.
I make a motion, we had Evan go ahead with his plan.
Well, Mary Wagon has made a motion to, uh, uh, put a placeholder in the, uh.
To request, to request the vote of selection, um, make a placeholder for this, um, proposed zoning bylaw change.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of Dennis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Mr. Chair, can I say something?
Anything else?
Before we close the matter?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, Evan, you know how they identified in, um, our zoning bylaw, the lack of, um, the provision for the site plan review to accept public, um, input? It, it might be good, and I don't know where to put that, but, um, kind of to just, to, to describe that a little more, 'cause to me, that sounds like that meeting is now going to have to be posted with a forty-eight hour notice?
Well, the, the plan review actually is, does notice the butters and does have a posted agenda.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, that, that provision probably would be accommodated, and I'd have to, you know, Charlie, you might want to, if you can, remind me of some of the points we had made about, um, or to Sharon Rooney when we had this conversation, but there were some, uh, things that we, that were being suggested we modify or amend in the bylaw that we felt were duplicative or, um, you know, things that were already happening. Um, and, uh, the reality is, we still, we, in some way, shape, or form, have to make these modifications to be in compliance. Charlie, do you remember that conversation?
Yeah, yeah, I do remember the conversation, and I, I thought that at the time that we had that conversation, it was suggested that if they could offer some ideas of what, uh, needed to be done to make the bylaws in compliance, that they do that with part of their report. I took a quick scan of the report. Um, I saw a little bit there, but I was, uh, disappointed that I didn't see a few other offerings in there to make the, uh, regulations a little bit more compliant. Uh, it had a little bit from the zoning bylaw, um, I didn't see an awful lot from the Planning Board Rules and Regulations that needed to be changed. So, uh, I'm not, the other part of that too is, I'm not sure how much of this really applies to, uh, uh, what the Planning Board has to do or whether it is something similar to a permit that any contractor has to, um, file with the EPA. They, they have a, um, sediment and erosion control, uh, plan and application that must be filed with EPA before they start a project for anything that's over an acre. And the only question I have is, are they going to have to file also, the way I understand it, um, to have a similar one from the state, uh, through the stormwater regulations or these erosion control regulations, uh, that will have to be filed with the Planning Board, or is that something that they simply need to do on their own?
I lack clarity on that, I'm not sure, I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I, I need to, I need to take the time to really study what she put together, because I'm not clear on that myself.
Yeah, and a general note, Charlie, about, uh, you'll note in the memo too, that I think there was some delay in receiving this final memo because of, uh, impacts of COVID-19, and the EPA has modified deadlines to make the, make these amendments, but it's still, um, would be shortly after May twenty twenty-one town meeting, so I still think it prudent to pursue changes this October.
Oh, definitely, definitely, because I think they, they said you had until July of twenty twenty-one.
So, yeah, if we, if we can, uh, if we get the placeholder articles in, um, we can, let's continue to engage, um, with Catherine and, uh, consultants and among ourselves to figure out the best articles to put forth.
Yep. So we want to put on the, the agenda, uh, the next meeting or, or a couple of meetings down, so we'll have a chance to digest it?
Uh, if it's okay with you, I would like to, I'll just keep it under Town Planner Report on future agendas and, and, uh, keep working with Charlie and, um, discussions among board members.
Good, good. Uh, anything else, Evan?
Uh, that's it, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Consulting Analyst Report with regards to Cape Cod Coffee. Um, Charlie, we do have your letter here, has everyone had a chance to read it?
Yeah.
Uh, you want to go through it, Charlie?
Yeah, just briefly, um, we did go through a number of items. Um, one of the things that came up is, and this is sort of a follow-up to the letter that had been previously submitted, was that, um, you got a letter from the, um, contractor who said that he was going to revegetate the area that was out front of the project, that was the subject of the complaint by a neighbor. Uh, both Evan and I discussed that with the developer and the contractor last Friday. Uh, their proposal is that they are going to remove all of the sand that was dumped on the site, uh, starting at Evergreen Circle and running into what would be the toe of the slope, uh, that was allowed under the site plan that was approved. Um, we discussed that with them at some length, and, uh, it was generally agreed that they would not only remove the sand that's there and take it down to the old grade, but they would then revegetate, or I should say, spread the loam that's been stockpiled there for some time over the area that was disturbed. Um, and that would take place prior to, um, any kind of revegetation that would take place. Now, their recommendation was that they plant wildflower seed in that area, because it was not, uh, according to them, they said they did not have to remove any trees. not, uh, according to them, they said they did not have to remove any trees. So what Evan and I agreed with them on last Friday was that they could spread the loam, but do not do any further revegetation until this matter was brought before the board for discussion to see whether or not a wildflower mix was going to, um, uh, stand muster with the board as a revegetation measure or whether you wanted something in addition to that.
Well, for me, I, it, the, the vegetation that was there anyway was under, so I actually kind of liked the idea of the wildflowers, I think it might be actually quite presentable and it's in keeping with a lot of the town. Uh, anyone else have any comments on it?
Wildflowers are best for one year, but then they don't come back and you get the weeds growing, you know, so I like the wildflowers, but I don't know if it's a permanent thing because they kind of die out if they don't water them right and, and stuff. I could see a couple plants put in there besides the wildflowers.
Something that would be permanent?
Yeah, something to be permanent, you know?
Native.
Na- na- native, yeah.
Permanent.
Yep.
Did, did any suggestion?
I don't mind the wildflowers, but I think we should have a little more, that's just my opinion.
I, I asked them if they would be interested in putting, uh, any kind of trees in there to sort of, uh, break up the line of sight.
Yeah.
Um, now, I wouldn't think it would take much to put, um, an oak or maybe a, a small pine in there, something like that. I wouldn't want to see it overly vegetated because, um, like Jack says, a lot of what was taken out was, was just the, the material that was real close to the ground, it was like brush.
Even if you got that, um, that high, um, like, the, the tall, um, um, beech grass, the sandy soil anyway, then you'd need no maintenance, I mean, no water, it'd be fine.
You'd look a little out of place in that location though, beech grass.
That's a good point, it's not, yeah, that's a good point.
I'm not familiar with wildflowers, but is there such a thing as a perennial wildflower?
Oh, yes, they're in my garden.
There's, um, you know, I don't know what exists, uh, in, along that, that frontage there, what, what actual vegetation is there, but there is a, a list of, of, a commission-approved list of, uh, uh, vegetation for a low-impact design and they have listed native species, uh, that might be adequate for that area.
Yep, yeah.
And just let them pick and choose what they would be able to place in that area.
Mandating going off that list might be a good point.
In the short term, the board might consider allowing them to do the wildflower and coming back at a later date with some more comprehensive plan or not, but that's an option also.
Yeah, I think it should be off that list. I don't even know if a wildflower mix is on that list.
I think stick to that list, yeah, that's a good point, we'll stick to the list there.
One of the other things that we did discuss with respect to that was, uh, there's an area out near Evergreen Circle that was cleared as a part of the Evergreen Circle construction, uh, that, and it shows on the plan as basically a loam and seed area because it's outside the revegetation line that was shown on the plan. So we all agreed that they could loam and seed that area, that it was not essential to try and revegetate that the way that it was before any construction took place. But, uh, the, the line, the line of vegetation that was to be maintained was clear on the plan and to that extent, they will revegetate, that was something for, uh, whether it's off of your approved list or whether it might include, uh, uh, something, you know, a rhododendron or two might even look good in there, just to break up the, the visual line of sight from Evergreen.
I mean, just whatever's on the list, I think would be the most, the safest and best way to go forward with them.
Okay.
Can we advise that Evan through a letter, uh, to just go with that native species list?
I'm, I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Can we advise them through a letter to go through with that native species list? Or do we need any sort of?
Uh, if, if, if the board is in general agreement, I can transmit a letter requesting that they, uh, revegetate the area, um, it, the, with planting consistent with those shown on the approved, um, vegetation for low-impact design as approved by the Cape Cod Commission.
Go ahead, Mary.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, yeah.
And I would just add Charlie's suggestions, you know, just a couple of trees and some rhododendrons, so.
Understood.
Break up the pine supply.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, Evan, did, Evan, did you include the email that I sent you confirming the telephone conversation that we had?
I think it might have only gone to Mary and myself, I don't know if, did I send that to the board?
I think I got it.
I didn't, because I saw your, I saw your letter, Charlie, and I thought you handled it, um, through the letter, but if there's something additional you want to share, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's worth, it's worth sharing with the board. Um, we had agreed, uh, in addition to the, the revegetation discussion we had on Friday, uh, I had a discussion with the contractor on how he was to handle the resloping of an area, uh, for one of the rain gardens, which there was no problem with, that, that will be handled nicely. Uh, there was some discussion that took a little bit of convincing, uh, that the pavement that they were going to put down on, I think they were headed for Monday, but it rained and so they did it yesterday, was that it should include a tack coat. Uh, it, it's like an adhesive basically, it goes between the binder and the wearing surface of the pavement for those times when the surface of the binder has gotten dirty or it needs to be swept and, and it needs to have a surface that will really adhere to the, uh, to the mix that put down. So everybody agreed to it, including the owner, the, the general contractor of the site and the site contractor. Well, in the meantime, I had a call to make an inspection, uh, for some potential paving at thirty-one Evergreen, which is the, the dog kennel site. So I turned in and lo and behold, they're doing the paving yesterday at Cape Cod Coffee, uh, without the benefit of any tack coat. Um, and to, to make a long story very short, um, Sky Rockets went off in my head and, um, I let the owner know that I was very upset with the fact that they didn't do it. I was given the excuse that it rained yesterday, so they didn't have a tack machine for today. Uh, I don't know how that, um, uh, makes it, makes it right. Uh, nevertheless, they tried to do it by hand, which I made very plain was not acceptable when we met on Friday. Um, there isn't an awful lot that I can do about that at this point for a couple of reasons. Uh, it wasn't spelled out in the special permit and unfortunately, details such as a tack coat has not generally been included on the plans that show the cross-section for any mix. But going forward, uh, seeing as how this has happened, um, I don't want to see it happen again and I think the only way that we can do that would be to make sure that from now on it does get included as a detail on the plans. Um, and it, it's not something that needs to go into the planning board rules and regulations except that I think that the detail, one of the detail sheets is in the back of the rules and regs, it's a plate that I put in for paving cross-section, could be modified to include that. So that we've got something to hang your hat on. Um, like I say, I don't have any way of, uh, of requirement, of requiring it if it's not in the plan that I can point to. So with your approval, I'll make that small adjustment just by a notation on that single plate, uh, that Evan can then put back into the, uh, back of the regulations for review by contractors or, or engineers when they put the plans together. So it was an unfortunate circumstance and not very pleasant, but, um, one of those things that happens from time to time.
Charlie, is the tack coat always needed or is it in this instance here because it was, uh, covered with sand and what have you?
If, if they had put the binder down and within a couple of days were coming back in with the wearing surface, I would say no. But in this particular case, even though they washed it off, they had a fire hose out there, washed it off and swept it before they washed it, nevertheless, there's a certain amount of dirt and so forth that gets contained, uh, maintained in the pores of the binder and it leaves it in such a condition that it just won't, uh, the top wearing surface won't attach itself to the binder in good shape. And in that particular case, if you remember, they wanted to reduce the thickness of the wearing surface from an inch and a half to an inch. So it was really that much more important that it be adhered well to the binder course. So there are those circumstances where I would say no, it wouldn't be necessary, especially if it was immediately followed up when the binder was put down, but, uh, most of these sites get pretty dirty because they don't want to mess up the top course before they get the construction done. So they hold off on it and the dirt just piles up. So that was one thing and the other thing was a couple of, uh, cuts that I had them to make to notch in the mix. Uh, there was no evidence that that was done, so all these things never got transmitted to the paving contractor in the appropriate way and it was all being done before I had a chance to see it. Had I not been down there, uh, to see the other site, I wouldn't have known about it. So it was just happenstance that I was there.
All right, Evan, do you think it, because it doesn't exist in every circumstance, is it good to have as a, as a note or something at the end, you know, the list for the contractors or the, you know, the people of building the sites to have it on there?
With regard to the tack coat?
Yeah.
I see no issue with that recommendation and another thing Charlie had, and I had discussed was, um, that language within the zoning bylaw that allows such a, uh, a, a short layer of, of pavement at the top, um, so we could consider amending that language so, uh, to require a thicker top course of, of mix.
Yeah, that, that part should go probably in the zoning bylaw because you'll recall that they came back and said that, uh, we couldn't require an inch and a half thickness of the wearing surface because in the zoning bylaw, it only said that you had to have an inch because it was, I think, a total of two and a half inches of mix, which nobody does anymore. So, uh, that needs to be modified, that's a zoning bylaw change. The other changes can be, uh, just with the plates that go in the back of your rules and regs, but you probably should modify the rules and regs to include that as well so that you've got the language in the regulation that somebody can read.
All right, do we need to take any action by the board here, Evan?
Make a motion?
Does the board want to consider a modification to the zoning bylaw with regard to that paving thickness tonight so I can submit an article, uh, as a placeholder to bring back again to the board? It's not something I think is critical and necessarily has to be done immediately, but we do have time to submit, uh, that kind of, another housekeeping article.
Well, it's a placeholder, so if we just determine that we don't want to do it, we can always remove it at a later date, so.
That's right, and I could work with Charlie on that language.
Okay, do we have a motion to get a placeholder for that as well?
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
All right, second by Mary. Uh, all those in favor of Dennis?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, do you have anything else, Evan? Uh, anything else, Charlie?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Uh, Evan, with regards to the correspondence, do I need to go through this list?
Um, I, I don't think so. Um, nothing is really new with all the form, uh, we don't have the, the June twenty twenty discharge report for South Cape Village. The only new thing you'll see in there, as I notify you of at our last meeting, was that South Cape Village was no longer, is no longer being sold, the special permit no longer needs to be transferred and I just included that correspondence received in this pack.
Does anyone else have anything for the board?
John, I just wanted to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wait, hold on, Jack.
Oh, wait, wait, hold, hold.
John, John's got something.
John, I have, have something to say.
Yeah, I, I, um, I just wanted to, uh, make a statement so that everybody's clear. Um, during the campaign, my employment at Cape Cod Five became, uh, an issue. Uh, I wanted everybody to, to understand, I resigned from my position at Cape Cod Five on, uh, June nineteenth, so that should not, you know, I didn't believe there was a conflict of interest anyway, but I have resigned from the bank, so that should not be an issue going forward.
Okay, all right, good.
Okay.
All right, split motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes, yes.
Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody, have a great night.
Thank you.
Good night. Happy Fourth, everyone.
Happy Fourth, yay!